Welcome back. Let the May 2021 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting come to order. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone could please remain standing for a moment of silence for our deceased residents for the month of April 2021. William Burkifer, Elizabeth Lizowitz, Evelyn Mala, Timothy Remick, Anthony Di Massio, Annette Viola, Dorothy O'Malley, James Jackson, Philip Carbonetta, Susan Jones, and Robert Piano Senior. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Will, would you give us the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. President, can you use that mic?
Yep.
Attendances, roll call. Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mrs. Spies.
Present.
Mrs. Heller. Mayor Leslie.
Present.
Mr. Vasquez.
Presence.
Ms. Licky.
Present.
Mr. Packard.
Present.
Mr. Gilroy.
Present.
Mr. Wills.
Present.
Mr. Catania. Mr. Wilbert's here. Mrs. Boyle is here.
Present.
Chief Montella.
Present.
Chief Sebly.
Present.
That completes the roll.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ford, would you like to give us the Coburn Elementary report, please? Welcome back. Good to see you.
It's great to see everyone. Can you, can everyone hear me okay?
No, actually.
No? All right. Thank you. It's great to see everyone. I'll just start off by saying, you know, we're back at school, too. It's great to be back here. We've been, am I talking loud enough? Is it?
Yeah, pull the mic towards you.
Is it a little muffled because of the mask?
There you go.
How's that? Is that better? Okay, sorry about that. It's great to see everyone and it's great to be back here to see everyone in person. And I'll just, you know, start off by saying, you know, four days in person at Coburn, PDSD for that matter. Students and staff continue to follow safety guidelines for in-person learning and continue to put forth superb effort every day. I said it a lot and I'll continue to say it, that our students and staff have just been amazing this past year throughout this entire pandemic. Throughout the month of April, Coburn Elementary students and staff participated in learning opportunities and they were blue each Friday throughout the month of April to raise awareness for autism. Per the Pennsylvania Department of Education, our students in all of our schools were still required to take the PSSAs and the Keystone Exams. Our students were amazing and again, we're finishing up PSSAs now. With everything that our students have endured, they honestly pushed through it and just gave it their best. Looking ahead in May, we have a really fun Zoom Lego event happening. We have approximately 170 participants signed up. Students are going to have an opportunity to meet with a master Lego builder to complete a Lego project. The groups are limited, so the students and families are going to have opportunities to interact with the builder. So they're all pretty excited about that. Also in May, we will be celebrating our winning writers and million-word readers at our reading celebration. Once I have all the names finalized, I would love to send them again to the Brookhaven Borough as we've done in the past. And although the students are unable to join us, I'd love to be able to recognize their achievements by announcing their names at the next board meeting because it's just such an honor for them to be recognized by council and we really appreciate that. And that's it. If there's anything happening, please join us on Twitter. You'll see what's happening daily at Coburn Elementary School. Follow us on Twitter at CoburnES.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
You're welcome. I'll see everybody in June. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sure.
Speak into the mic, please. No, the camera won't pick it up. Please speak into the mic.
I just wanted to say, please thank all the teachers this week for our appreciation, Teacher Appreciation Week.
I appreciate that. I will absolutely pass that along as Teacher Appreciation Week and I will certainly make sure that they get that message tomorrow morning from me directly from council. Thank you very much. And they've done an outstanding job, as you all know. So thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Have a good night. Is there anyone for public discussion? Step on up, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Dawn Claus. My address is 167 Virginia Avenue. Somerville Park. It's atrocious. The swings are 35 inches off the ground.
Okay.
My seven-year-old can't get on it. You have to pick them up to put them on it. The baby swings are 37 inches off the ground. If a child falls out of that, they're going to get hurt.
Okay.
Okay, I've spoke to a few people at the office, on Facebook, and nothing gets done.
Okay.
Okay, the wood chips that are in there are horrible. My grandson has gotten like three or four splinters from the wood chips.
Okay.
And the sliding boards are, when they come down, they're very high off where I have to catch him when he comes down.
Okay.
So we kind of have a problem with the park.
No, you're not alone. You're not the first person I've heard it from and I will, I will talk to Public Works about it.
I mean, that when the park was first put in there, when the new equipment was, we were told that they were going to have cameras there and there were supposed to be lights there. I had to fight for two years to get the signs put back, no dogs and no smoking in the park.
Okay.
So we kind of have a problem with it because now we have teenagers destroying the property and nobody sees it.
Okay.
We also have trucks coming down, throwing their debris over the hill.
That's happening again?
Yeah, it's happened again. It just happened last week.
We had it happen a couple of years ago.
No, it just happened last week.
We knew who the violator was at the time.
And he covers his license plate.
Do you know who it is? Don't say the name.
I know who it is. He's not from our street or whatever. But he covers his license plate, brings tree branches, throws them in the park. He was approached and he was like, well, where am I supposed to get rid of these? They're not my trees. They're not our trees either. This is a park. Not trash to be thrown into it.
So he's throwing, he's throwing?
Tree branches, tree trunks. They're huge pieces like this. And he's throwing them off his truck.
On a regular basis?
This is like the third time in the past month. So it's hap-
The next, the next time you see him, dial 911. I have one of our police dispatched over there. And, but as far as the other concerns go, well, we'll take care of it. You're not the first person to bring it to our attention. But we'll take care of Somerville.
Okay.
I want, I'll talk to Public Works tomorrow.
Okay, and another thing. We have a truck that's been parked on our street since 2017 when his inspection and his license plate. I've brought it to the attention of a couple of people. It's still sitting there. Now we have like seven or eight teenagers at the top of the street that are driving cars. I live at the bottom of the street. My husband comes home from work. He has no parking spot because there are so many teenagers.
An abandoned car?
Well, the person lives there at the house, but the car doesn't run.
Well, if it's not inspected, it doesn't run. It's an abandoned.
Right. It hasn't been inspected since 2017.
Okay.
I did take a picture of the license plate if you need that.
Falls under codes enforcement, does it not, Mr. Wills?
Yeah, also.
We will, we're motioning to hire a new codes enforcement officer tonight. We'll take care of it. We're going to be a lot more aggressive with these items. That's why, that's why we advertised and interviewed and hired this, this individual.
Yeah, because I mean, when you have a house that has like four or five cars in it because of teenagers have their cars, there's not enough room to park them.
On the street?
Yeah.
Okay. Message me the address of that truck on Facebook. I don't want you, I don't want you to list their address or speak their address in a meeting, but get me that address.
Okay.
For the truck. You're, you messaged me the other day, so you.
Right.
Message me that address and I'll take care of it.
All right.
And we'll take care of Somerville.
Also, as a reminder, 911 is for all emergencies and non-emergencies. So this way you can get it documented, you know, with the borough so we have it on file. Okay.
You see this individual dumping, call right away.
Yeah. All right. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mrs. Claus.
It is also a police department matter with regard to the automobile not being properly inspected. That's a violation of the Pennsylvania Motor Vehicle Code. So I see this young lady is now coordinating that information with our acting chief of police and I think that'll get that situation resolved promptly.
Is there anyone else for public discussion?
Wait a minute, I need somebody to.
Is that a no, Harry?
That's a no.
Anyone else, no one else for public discussion? First public discussion session is closed. Chief Montella. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good to be back. Evening, council.
Great to be back.
Brookhaven Fire Company's April 2021 fire report. We had two fire incidents in the borough. Twenty non-fire, 24 calls from utility, five drills for a total of 51 calls for the month. 215 fire and rescue calls for the year. Had no loss on structure or contents in the borough. We had no firefighter or civilian injuries for the month. Our manpower was 51 calls, averaged 13 firefighters in service for 853 hours for the month, 3,094 for the year. We had five training sessions, averaged 27 firefighters, 297 hours of training log for the month, 687 for the year. Brookhaven Fire Company responded to following incidents in the borough. We had one accident with entrapment at Bridgewater and Chester Creek Roads. We had a gas leak inside at 4427 Houston Ara- Houston Avenue and a fuel spill in the giant parking lot. Assisted Upland Fire Company went two accidents, one at I-95 northbound at Crozier and 877 Upland Avenue. They also had two building fires in Upland, one at Seventh Street and the other at Crozier Hospital. Assisted Swarthmore Fire Company on a building fire at 111 South Chester Road. Assisted Bethel Fire Company on a building fire at 1515 South Garnet Mine Road. Assisted Aston Township Fire Department on a building fire at 201 Anderson Avenue. And assisted South Media on an accident with entrapment at Baltimore Pike and Beatty Road. And assisted Parkside Fire Company on a building fire at 3215 Tom Sawini Drive. Our monthly fire training was SCBA recertification. We did that at the Westchester Burn Tower with our new SCBAs. We did search and rescue training and hose line advancement. Also, Brookhaven Fire Company took delivery of 37 new Scott 5.5 press PSI SCBAs and 37 spare bottles for each air pack through the AFG Assistance to Firefighter Grant, which was awarded at $257,000. The grant award was $244,000 from the federal government and the fire company was responsible for the balance of $13,000 for those new lifesaving air packs. We did, I did submit COVID-19 update reports to council and the mayor. And our ambulance report for the month of March, we had 155 ambulance calls, 95 people transported to the hospital. 120 of those dispatches were ALS calls, 35 BLS, 81 local calls in Brookhaven for a total of 539 ambulance calls for the year. Additionally, under the EMS, we did apply for an EMS foundation grant for $50,000 of equipment. We're waiting to, that grant was just submitted last week, so we hopefully make out all right with that for some upgrade some of our equipment. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, chief. Chief Sebly?
Good evening. Good evening, council. All right, for the month of April.
John, turn the mic a little towards you.
For the month of April.
Thanks, sir.
Brookhaven Police responded 409 assignments. The worthy ones were one aggravated assault where a firearm was recovered from the, from the actors. One theft, oh, sorry, seven theft incidents, three simple assaults, three fraud reports, one public drunkenness, two disorderly persons, one narcotics arrest. Thirty, Brookhaven Police investigated 30 suspicious conditions, four harassment complaints. They resolved, we resolved 27 disturbances. We investigated one death investigation, one warrant service, and one mental health. We investigated 20 alarms and we assisted other departments 66 times. In total, 44 citations were issued, 40 warnings were issued. We took 24 vehicle accident reports. Seven, nine adults were arrested and two juveniles were arrested. For April, we were doing great with COVID. Until beginning of April, we had two officers came ill with COVID. One is back and the other one is doing well and he's going to be back in two days when his quarantine's up. We had, we were happy to assist with the Easter drive-through early in the month. For autism awareness, we, we actually had a meeting. We had a visitor to the station. His name was Alex Mann. He gave, got a tour of the station and gave good tips for police officers in dealing with persons with autism. We had a new officer sworn in in, in April. And currently, we have three officers in the background phase for hiring. One's just about done. The other two are getting started. For training, Officer Wetton attended eight hours of SWAT training. We had several officers, Officer Wetton certified in firearms instruction. And we had a mental health professional come in and speak to our officers for self, it's self-care for first responders, giving officers tips, how to what to look for with mental health issues and how to de-stress. And that is, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wills?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. After a nearly 15-month hiatus, it is great to be back at a live public setting with colleagues, friends, and most importantly, the good citizens of Brookhaven Borough as we conduct the people's business. With regard to my report this evening, Mr. President, it is on file with the Borough. I just have a few agenda items I would like to bring to council's attention as well as the public. One concern is the Arbor developers. This is the two-lot subdivision that is occurring over on Zoor Street. The Borough has received a formal request from the developer to waive the sewer tie-in fees for the two proposed single-family dwellings to be constructed on Zoor Street. I did provide a copy of my recommendations to Borough Council concerning this issue. What is the pleasure of Borough Council at this time?
To decline. Anyone else have any issues?
I would suggest that be placed in a formal motion, Mr. President. Is there a motion before council to decline the request to waiver the sewer tie-in fees for this particular development?
Sir, move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Very well. I will so advise the developer. Second issue on my agenda, Mr. President, concerns the Brookhaven Storage Development. This is the self-storage facility on 2.4 acres of undeveloped land on the south side of Brookhaven Road. Now, a zoning hearing board meeting was held back on April the 13th of 2021 as the developer required multiple variances. I was present at that particular hearing as well as zoning officer William Gavin to provide testimony to the board. At that hearing, the zoning hearing board granted the developer variances to permit a self-storage facility in the R-4 residential district and to permit relief from the required landscape buffer. However, the zoning hearing board denied the developer's request for variance to permit a three-story building in excess of 35 feet. Now, as a result of the zoning hearing board's decision in this matter, the developer has requested a 90-day extension from Borough Council in order to take action upon its land development plans so that it may make appropriate revisions in light of the zoning hearing board decision. I think the 90-day extension is appropriate, given the zoning hearing board's decision. And therefore, I would recommend that this Borough Council grant the 90-day extension. If it is the pleasure of Borough Council to do so, then a motion would be in order at this time.
Who wants the motion?
Sir, move.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Very well. I will so advise the developer. Third issue on my agenda concerns another development known as the Popeyes Land Development Project. This is a project where the developer seeks to develop the former TD Bank Building, which has been vacant now for quite some time. That property is located at 4236 Edgemont Avenue. Developer shall be required to obtain a conditional use approval from the Borough Council to permit a fast-food restaurant with a drive-through in the C1 zoning district. Developer will also be obligated to obtain multiple variances from the zoning hearing board. Now, the planning commission is scheduled to review the land development plan and the application for conditional use hearing at its meeting on May 18th of 2021. I have placed an advertisement in the Delaware County Daily Times, which is scheduled to run later this week so that we are in compliance with the municipality's planning code and in compliance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. Now, this Borough Council will also be holding a conditional use hearing on June the 2nd of 2021 in council chambers room or perhaps in the gymnasium if there is insufficient space here. And again, I will be properly advertising that meeting. Again, so we are in compliance with the MPC and the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law. Again, the conditional use hearing before Borough Council is to authorize a fast-food restaurant with a drive-through. Again, that is only permissible by conditional use, by approval by this Borough Council. And therefore, a public hearing will be held on June the 2nd. And again, the public will be invited to participate and to attend that particular meeting.
We will make that the gymnasium. I don't expect the governor's capacity and their capacity limits to increase between now and June the 2nd. So we, we don't want to limit it to 12 individual participants. So we'll make that the gymnasium unless capacity limits change, which I doubt.
That's the same day as council or it isn't?
No, it's not.
That's, that is Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday, okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And my final agenda item, Mr. President, concerns a resolution that is before Borough Council here this evening authorizing an additional escrow release for the completion of certain public improvements by the developer at the residence of Brookhaven Glen. That is our over 55 development off of Radio Lane and Edgemont Avenue. Again, the developer Franklin Brookhaven LLC has established an irrevocable letter of credit with the Borough with WSFS Bank in the amount of $1,878,122.41 as security for the completion of certain public improvements. The developer, by correspondence, dated April the 15th of 2021, has requested a partial escrow release for the completion of certain public improvements. And we have, in fact, received a letter from our Borough engineer recommending an escrow release in the amount of $94,799.46. And so if it is the pleasure of Borough Council to adopt such a resolution approving the escrow release in that amount, then a motion would be in order at this time.
Sir, move.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Very well. We will so advise the developer and a copy of the resolution will be forwarded to the developer by the Borough Secretary. Other than that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. This is my first time sitting up here as the mayor tonight. So I just have two things on for my report. I have a resolution and I also have a proclamation, so I will read them now. A resolution of Brookhaven Borough Council, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, honoring Victoria Brown on the occasion of earning the Girl Scout Gold Award. Whereas Victoria Brown, 37, 51, Susan Lane, Brookhaven, Pennsylvania, is a member of the Girl Scout Troop 57083. And whereas Victoria Brown has been a Girl Scout for 12 years and focused on building little free libraries in her community. As her gold award, as her gold award, sorry, the highest achievement in the Girl Scouts. And whereas Victoria Brown's accomplishments has a, as a Girl Scout, which includes a bronze award, the highest achievement for Girl Scout Juniors and has achieved Girl Scout leadership, kindness and giving back to the community. And whereas Victoria Brown is also a member of the National Honors Society, National Arts Society, National Science Honor Society, and Mean Green Canoe Team. Now, therefore be resolved that Brookhaven Borough Council proudly joins the Girl Scouts, Girl Scout Troop 57083, and the Brown family and all others in honoring Victoria Brown for her earning the Girl Scout Gold Award. Resolved this third day of May 2021. Signed by Brookhaven Borough Council President, Mayor Leslie, and Secretary John Wilbert. So congratulations to her, to Victoria, on that honor.
Good job, Victoria. Thank you, Mayor.
Do we need a motion for that?
No.
No.
To pass that? No, okay.
It's a proclamation, really.
That one was a resolution.
And that requires a motion to adopt.
Okay, I'll make that.
All right, we're apparently all out of sorts. Janice, you have the motion? Do we have a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Sorry, we're used to Zoom. Apparently forgot how to do our jobs.
And this one is Brookhaven Borough, Delaware County, Pennsylvania proclamation. Whereas Brookhaven Borough Council and Mayor Leslie recognize that good mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development and a child's mental health week. And Child's Mental Health Week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter while celebrating the accomplishments of children and families affected by mental health concerns. And whereas, according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition. And whereas, research has shown early identification and appropriate treatment of mental health disorders among children and adolescents provide them better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. And whereas, children and youth with mental health challenges and their families benefit from access to timely services and support that are family-driven, youth-guided, and culturally appropriate. They also benefit from the integration of behavioral health in primary care, education, and child welfare. And whereas, it is important that children and adolescents, along with their families and communities, learn about warning signs of mental health disorders and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment. And whereas, obtaining a full and accurate diagnosis of a
And whereas, obtaining a full and accurate diagnosis of a child requires gathering information from diverse sources, including the family, the school, and others involved with the child. Now therefore, Brookhaven Borough does hereby proclaim May 2nd to the 8th of 2021 as a Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. Resolved this third day of May 2021. Signed by Borough Council President, Mr. Heller, Mayor Leslie, and John Wilworth Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor.
That is it. End of my report.
Good evening, folks. Good to see everyone back. It's great to be back in person. We knew we'd get here. We didn't think it would take 14 months, but it is what it is, and we are back. Council, I need a motion to approve the April 5th, 2021 council meeting minutes.
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions about the minutes? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the April 26th, 2021 council workshop minutes.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Motion carries. Vaccine update, vaccine clinic update, I should say. Giant has concluded their second doses this week. They did a great job. There will not be another second round. Giant does not see the demand with the sudden widespread availability of the vaccine throughout the county, which is good news. We will look to work with Giant in the future for our assumed annual COVID vaccines, or whatever guidelines come out on that, and for our flu shots. They did a great job. We were able to vaccinate hundreds of residents and a total of 1,080 individuals. Banner update, the install for round four of 26 banners will take place the third week of May. And also a reminder about the car show that will be held on Saturday, May 29th, 10:00 to 2:00 at Coburn School, which will benefit both the host, Delco Cruisers, and the hometown Hero Banner Project. So come on out, it will be a good time. They have, I believe, they're expecting 300 to 400 cars. I have two executive meetings to announce. One was held on April 27th from 7:00 PM to 9:15 PM. The purpose was to conduct the codes enforcement officer interviews, and we will have an executive session held immediately following tonight's council meeting. Topic is personnel. So with the CEO position, we interviewed, well, we had five applicants, I should say. One interview no-showed. We conducted interviews, and we decided to integrate the position with an internal candidate's current existing position. We awarded it to Matt Koppel. We have full faith in Matt Koppel. Matt does a great job as the inspections administrator, and we expect nothing less in the new revamped codes enforcement position. So with that, I need a motion to integrate the codes enforcement officer position into the inspection administrator position for the rate of a $5 hourly increase on top of Mr. Koppel's current salary, a $100 monthly fuel reimbursement, the purchase of an iPad with a cellular data plan, and a 27 number assigned, with the understanding that this position will be reevaluated for the first 30, 60, and 90 days. On top of that, there will be a full one-year probationary period, and the position will be reevaluated on a regular basis. We were not disappointed in the last codes enforcement officer by any means. We were disappointed in the position itself. It does not work for someone that holds a full-time job outside of the borough. Mr. Koppel does have a full-time job with us, but Mr. Koppel can find the time, we believe he will find the time, to do this job and deliver the results that the position demands. Everyone at this point knows why we did this. The public expected more out of the position, and we're going to get more out of the position. If it doesn't work with Mr. Koppel, we'll find someone that will do it. But again, we fully expect Mr. Koppel to do the job. Who wants the motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any further questions? Aye, motion carries. Believe that is, oh, we have one more thing. We realized by accident with the pandemic, using Zoom, for all the problems we had with Zoom, it drove us crazy at times, one of the great values of using Zoom was the live interaction with the public, particularly those that cannot make meetings. So we are choosing not to lose that ability and take that benefit away from our residents. So with these live meetings, with these in-person meetings, we are working on a way to make these live broadcasts. And on top of making them live broadcasts, we will have live remote interaction from business owners or residents. The idea would probably be to have a TV on the wall and to run an independent Zoom meeting for the purpose of allowing those that would like to participate remotely and live to do so. It's too much to lose, so we hope to have that within four to six weeks. And that is all I have. Who's up next? Where's my list? Ms. Awkey.
Yes, thank you. I do have the financial bill list for the month of May. General fund, $28,534.03. Sewer fund, $12,426.90. Trash fund, $550. And the road fund, $2,028.00, for a total for the month, $43,513.73. So I'd like to make a motion to pay those bills this month.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions?
No, that's all I have.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you. The ordinance committee met on Thursday, April 15th, to discuss the food truck fees, our current trash ordinance, and what we can do to help our new code enforcer. Our next meeting will be on.
Put your mic down.
Our next meeting will be on May 20th in person, and we'll make sure that we follow the rules for that. We are also, again, updating our welcome packet, which is very helpful for anyone living in the borough, not just for new residents. So once we get that updated, it'll be posted, there'll be copies made for the office, and anyone can contact me if they like, and I'll make sure they get a copy of that. April was a busy month with electronics and shredding. The electronics recycling event was held on April 10th and produced 9.88 tons of e-waste. That's quite a lot, the most we've ever had in the borough. The shred event resulted in 160 people dropping off 6,580 pounds of paper. Again, that shred event was also the biggest the borough has seen, and it's probably because people were home and they were cleaning out. So we're glad that it was such a popular, those two events were so popular with the borough. There will be another electronics and shred event on Saturday, November 13th, at Coburn Elementary's parking lot. Please make note of this date and the location, as the calendar does state, October 23rd. We wanted to make sure we could get both of the events on the same day, and we weren't able to do that on the 23rd. So there is a new date, and it's November 13th, and I'll remind everyone as it gets closer. Providence Animal Center will host the Chip Vaccination Clinic on Tuesday, September 7th, in our gym, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Appointments will need to be scheduled online by visiting their website, and walk-ups will not be permitted at this time. Normally, you could just walk up and schedule. You're not able to do that this year. If that date happens to change, I'll make everyone aware. Rec Board events. So we have the Concert in the Park series that's coming up. The first one will be held on June 19th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, and the band is LSD the Band, our own Jim LaPere. This is his band, so that should be interesting. The other dates are July 21st, August 18th, and September 25th. September 25th is also our family day, so we're going to coincide the two events, which is something we haven't done before. Mr. Dykes, would you like to?
I would.
Okay. We also have, October 17th is the annual golf outing, October 30th is the trunk retreat, and I'm not going to go into the other events because they're too far away, but as the meetings get closer, I'll update the public on the events coming up. And that's all my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs.
I did have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Over the weekend, on the news, they did say, because of the pandemic and the economy, a lot of food trucks were really put out of business. Is that going to affect us at all, do you think? I wasn't sure. That's why I figured I'd ask you. You seem to know more about it.
I wouldn't think so. I actually know somebody that just started a food truck business, and it's booming. So I wouldn't think so.
They were saying a lot of those businesses were out of business because of, okay, that's good.
Yeah, I think they'll be okay.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Fuchs, I have something.
Mm-hmm.
Did you get a chance, you or Mrs. Heller, to bring it to the Rec Board's attention or to the baseball, softball teams?
For the food truck?
Regarding to the smoking on the fields?
Yes, yes, we did.
So, I don't know if I can. It doesn't matter to me. We mentioned it, Marion prepared softball, so she was going to bring it back to softball to parents, and they were going to send out a ladder on both sides to just remind parents not to smoke while, you know, we have young and fled. So we did mention it, and we're going to actually send it back to here.
Right, and we do have an ordinance on that, so.
Yes, correct. Okay, thank you.
That's all my report. Thank you.
Mr. Vaskis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody, for the Public Works monthly report. There are two sewer backups, one at 121 Schoolhouse Lane. There's no issues on the borough end. Issue was with the homeowner, and they were advised. Second one was at 3605 Williamson. There's no issues in the street. The homeowner was advised. We're trying to get ahead of our sewer problems that we've seemed to be picking up with, unfortunately. So we just, we got the team out, cleaning 38 sections of sanitary sewers. Sanitary sewer mains on 10 streets. The year-to-date total of 66 sewer main sections on 22 streets are now completed. We're trying to, you know, keep up with this and try and stay ahead of our problems and find them before they become a real issue. We had to replace a manhole cover on Williamson. There's a sinkhole reported at the 600 block of Kenny Lane. The residents were having a flooding issue problem in the rear yard. The findings were reported to Mr. Catania's office. For the parks, the retention pond was trimmed down per the plans at Durkin. The parking lots were painted at Durkin and Memorial, all the lines. We fixed the roll-up door at the snack bar at Durkin. Apparently, there was an issue, it was getting stuck, so went in there and just, we took care of it instead of bringing in a contractor. The handicap signs were replaced at Sanson with newer signs that are not faded anymore. At Memorial Park, 12 barricades were constructed to be used at the baseball and softball fields as a safety measure to separate the players and the fans for some COVID safety protocols. Two fence gates were fixed at Sanson near the batting cages that weren't properly closing anymore. There was a damaged picnic bench at Memorial that was repaired as well. Plexiglass and dividers were also, and sanitary dispensers were placed at each park per the COVID safety applications. There was an overgrown bush at 185 Meadow Brook that was complaining about, that was on Borough property. Our property is cleared, so it is not on our issue, it's on the resident. Weeding and mulch was done on all the street islands and the Borough Hall. The Pennsylvania One Call Tickets for the month was 57. Brings us to a year-to-date total of 154. New street signs were ordered for Church and Maple. Maple and Seeger were damaged. We filled potholes using 16.5 bags, 825 pounds of cold patch. The year-to-date total is 63 bags at 3,150 pounds. The department also conducted two hours of hands-on training and three hours of virtual training for the month. Topics covered by the deployment and operation of emergency generators for traffic lights, COVID-19 in the workplace, and defensive driving class. Also wanted to announce the second quarter of the chipping will be started at the week of May 10th to the 17th. To make an appointment, please contact the Borough Hall, and we'll get you slotted for the team to come out. Mr. Will's already touched base with everything I had to say with zoning, unfortunately. I don't know if we have anything new coming up, Bill? Okay, no new update that we know of as of yet, and that would be the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pappas.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Do you have a mic?
I'm not going to need one.
Okay.
I talk too loud as it is.
Okay.
On April 26th, the monthly workplace safety meeting was held. It was reported that there was one injury from a Public Works employee, which required general first aid and a tetanus shot. There was no other medical issues were reported. There was no vehicle accidents reported to Borough-owned vehicles. Harry, our building maintenance supervisors continue to sanitize the Borough workstation, the gym, and the community rooms. He also takes care of the police department and the police cars. There was an overabundance of sanitizing products from the various sources, including donations from Lowe's, that Harry has graciously provided resources, make available to the fire, the police departments, Public Works, and also the district court. And finally, the Planning Commission still has a vacancy. The applicant should have an interest to approve the overall appearance of the borough while achieving, while adhering to construction and zoning codes. They should be able to read land development drawings and interpret construction codes, and the applicant should submit a resume to the Borough Secretary at the Borough Hall. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Mrs. Heller. Thank you for using a microphone.
So for this month, we do have a meeting scheduled for the parade committee, but it's going to be in the planning and in the works, so we will keep anyone updated if that parade committee does happen. I need to make a motion to accept the resignation of Dave Deplicky from the Rec Board. He is an alternate, and unfortunately, due to some personal commitments, he's not available to dedicate his time for the Rec Board as an alternate, so I need to make that motion.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to take this opportunity to thank Dave for the years of service that he has provided for the Rec Board and for all the other events that he has helped out at the borough, so he'll be greatly missed. He did state that he will help out if necessary, but he didn't want to take up a position where it could be someone else. Baseball is working on closing ceremonies. I'll have a specific date, hopefully the end of this week, but they do want to do a small little parade, it looks like, from Memorial Park to Durkin, so I'll be reaching out to the fire chief and the police chief for instructions and what that will entail. And I think that's all that I have to report.
Thank you. Mr. Gilroy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have two things, meetings to announce. Thursday, 13th, 7:00 PM, the tech committee will meet in person, and the Wednesday, the 20th, at 7:00 PM, the historical committee will meet. That would be the end of my report.
It'll be a miracle if the camera picks up either one of your conversations. Terrible DJs. Thank you, Mr. Pappas, for helping us out. Mr. Catania. Don't let either one of those two show you to use that.
Thank you, Mr. President. As soon as I report, there's a couple things I want to touch on. Last week, we had talked about that strip of ground that runs between Brookhaven Road and Edwards Avenue, between the new development and the existing houses. We also did some research, and it appears that strip of ground is a remnant piece left over from the original estate. So we've contacted the developer via email to indicate that to him, ask him to research it further and correct it as needed.
Mm-hmm.
Good job.
Also, met with Public Works at Sanson Park. I don't know if the authorization is or not, but there's a drainage problem over there they want to take care of, and they wanted to use the leftover materials from the Shepherd Street job to do that, so I'm not sure if.
Considering that, considering that we're going to use the, what are they, inlets?
Inlet and pipe.
The inlet pipe that we already paid for, we're going to use the Borough excavator, and we're going to use Public Works employees. No, we don't need authorization for that. I just hope it works.
It will.
Yeah, it should.
Good.
Is that the strip in between?
Strip in between, yep. Strip in between the tennis courts and the smaller of the two girls softball fields. It's been a swamp for years. So we basically have a free solution, virtually free.
All right. Other than that, at the sewage treatment plant, a couple things. Other than that, at the sewage treatment plant, a couple things. The first one is to consider award or purchase of equipment for the mechanical screen from Rorde Materials Incorporated in the amount of $91,500 for the CoStar program. This is a budgeted item, it's a problem that's been ongoing at the plant for a while.
See, can you say, I'm having trouble hearing you.
All right, let me try this. It's a purchase of equipment for a mechanical screen from Rorde Materials in the amount of $91,500.
Okay.
That's for equipment, and we'll have to put out a bid for the installation, but this gets us, this piece of equipment's about four to six months out.
All right, so the motion would be to put it out the bid?
This motion will be to award this equipment for the CoStars program to authorize the purchase of the equipment.
That was my question.
Oh, okay. Janice, do you have a question?
CoStars.
You have a question?
No, I thought it was CoStars, I just wanted to confirm that.
It is.
I thought it was CoStars, thank you.
No, I knew that. I thought it was.
Well, who wants the motion?
I'll take the motion.
Who wants the second? Any additional questions?
Hopefully, this takes care of our problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The second thing at the sewage treatment plant is that one of the mixers went down, so we need authorization to purchase a replacement in the amount of $8,000, which includes equipment and installation.
Okay, do it by motion. Who wants the motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Bids for the 2021 street resurfacing program were opened, and we're going to ask council to consider award to AF Gaming Company in the low bid amount of $195,633.55.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, 414 Edwards Drive, we were notified of a sinkhole near a storm sewer inlet, we're going to ask for council to authorize repair of that storm sewer inlet.
What, do we have a price yet?
Do we have a price? I would estimate it to be under $5,000, it's a very simple job.
Okay. That doesn't need to be done by motion.
Okay.
Okay, I was wondering why you're pausing.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Leslie.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Glad to be back also. Just a couple things on my report here. The Papa John's is open, Toro is over on East Maple, it's going to be open real soon. Poe Boys is here a couple days a week, that's been inspected. Reiterateable on the fire pits, it's summertime again, burn barrels, chimney areas, no trash must be covered. Over at 5,005 Edgemont Avenue the other day, I was riding by, and there's three tanks, holding tanks, grease receptors there. So I saw the guy dip his head under there, so I stopped. I said, yo, you can't put your head in there, it's breaking the plane, confined space. So from now on, want to recommend to the borough and the council and public safety guys and the Public Works guys, anytime there's a confined space, they need to reach out to the fire department or myself, so we know that there's a confined space happening in the borough. It doesn't matter if it's the utility companies doing a confined space entry, we need to know about it, okay? Mr. Grant's on board, and I say, Mr. Grant, Bob, because I immediately called Bob, I said, come up here. The grease receptors were full. We're supposed to have a meeting the next day with the market up there and Bridget. I don't know how that went, I couldn't make that meeting. Anyway, any confined space, the fire company needs to be notified, it's a phone call away. And then, everybody's been waiting for this, they wanted to know the cause and origin of the Coco's Fire. Just before I give that report, I'm going to reiterate what Mrs. Fuchs said about spring cleanup. Get rid of your old paint cans, turpentine, gasoline, get rid of all that stuff, old oily rags, everything, get rid of it, okay? Between myself, we had four third-party fire marshals, one electrical engineer, one mechanical engineer, one PA State Fire Marshal, one Delco CID Fire Investigator, one third-party attorney with fire ground investigation, a team of three forensic evidence management guys, 11 different camera angles that we recovered that day of the fire, they got the hard drive out, they dried it out, we saw the video. It was very good video, and we concluded, believe it or not, spontaneous combustion of a bucket of old oily greasy cleaning rags, okay? We saw it. And we sent the bucket and the rags and everything out for analysis, came to a lab, came back, and that's what we put the thing on, the cause and origin was spontaneous combustion. So get rid of anything you're not using in your garages and sheds, please. So, the next question was, are they going to tear it down? It's up to the insurance structural engineers. I advise them to keep Mr. Catania on board with that, when they do come investigate for that, to see what the outcome of that's going to be, to notify our fire engineer, so he's involved with it also. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your hard work on that.
Yes, good job.
The property owner would require a demolition permit if they're going to proceed to demo that building?
Yes, yes, and I already advised Mr. Catania.
Mr. Catania's office.
And I advised our insurance people to get ahold of Mr. Catania when they go to review that property again.
Mr. Gavin.
Good evening. Good evening, thank you, Mr. President, Council, it's nice to finally see everybody. Mr. Will's already touched on the Brookhaven Storage meeting on April 13th, so thank you for that. I've had 17 applications for the month, and they have all been approved. A few of them had to be tweaked a little bit, met with the property owners, but everything, everything's good. That's all I had to report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Brings us to the second public discussion session. Is there anyone for public discussion? Mr. Dykes, come on down.
Tom Dykes, 305 Westbrook Haven Road. First, as I had as the rec board president, we did bring up the cigarettes and smoking at the parks and asked them to do that. We also brought up about people bringing their dogs to the parks. We need to remind the public, smoking is prohibited, and dogs are prohibited at the parks, okay?
Also, keep in mind that we requested that the public bring their dogs to Durkin Field to keep the flock of 130-plus geese away.
That's the exception to the rule.
Sure, but what we have to remind the public, that ever since we have been doing that, we have not seen that flock of geese. It actually, it did work. So if dogs leave a couple piles on the field, it's actually a good trade-off for, the entire field was covered in goose waste.
Doing that.
So, so Durkin Field is a go, but clean up after your dogs if you run them on Durkin Field.
Yes, please.
And don't let them tear up the infield, please.
Okay.
Can I ask, is there appropriate signage in the parks?
There is signage at all the parks.
Smoking is prohibited.
It's on all the signs at the parks, yes.
And the issue with the dogs, part of the issue with the dogs was what was being left behind, but was also the concern of people not monitoring their dogs, or children in the area, because the dogs don't act if people are around as well.
Great, and for the public, we're all looking at someone, and they have no idea what you're saying, but that's, I agree.
I said, the issue was not with necessarily what the dog was leaving behind, but with the dog and the owner not necessarily paying attention to the dogs and the dogs approaching the kids, and there was an issue with that.
I see. I'm going to, we're going to have mics on our lapels next one.
From the rec board, I'd like to read a letter that's going out to all our business owners, as well as anyone else who would like to help out. We hope that everyone is starting to have a bright outlook as we continue to reopen as a community. As you may know, Brookhaven Recreation Board works hard to enhance the quality of life for all residents. In order to accomplish this, the board is in charge of developing and hosting recreation activities for all of our residents, from children, teens, adults, to our seniors. We strive to accomplish this as physically prudent as possible. We are sure that all of you know that we need financial help from residents and businesses. The board has many programs throughout the year, from the Easter egg hunt, to summer concerts, to trunk or treat, and Christmas events, and of course, our largest event, Brookhaven Family Day. Our summer concert series offers individuals and families alike an enjoyable evening of music in Eden Park. These evenings are being hosted on June 19th, July 21st, August 18th, and one change is September 24th, we moved it to Friday night, remember?
Was that confirmed?
Huh?
That was confirmed?
I think, I think that's what we decided, right?
Okay.
We decided that, September 24th, so it'll be a Family Day weekend events with a concert on Friday night and Family Day on Saturday, the 25th. Sponsors are needed so that we can bring these fun events to the borough. You can sponsor a single band or an evening concert up to the entire concert series. All sponsors will be recognized at each of our concerts. Please contact the borough office at the phone number if you would like to donate to the concert series. This year's Family Day, our 34th, we've had to hold the 34th for a year, will be at noon, from noon to 4:00 at Brookhaven Borough Municipal Center. As you know, Family Day is a long history of fun, excitement, and lots of great memories for both adults and children of the borough, and such success would not be possible without a high level of cooperation between the borough and our valued business community. Any donation you can make would be greatly appreciated, and will be advertised on the Family Day program, which is seen by over 1,800 borough residents. Please make checks payable, too. If your business would like to sponsor an activity, including food, contact, we'll get the contact information out to that, just to let you know that you're donating help, let us know. Prize donations, any business donating $100 or more are welcome to advertise by displaying a poster or banner, that'll be supplied by them, and/or they could set up a table, the tables buy up from us, with giveaways at their table between, we set up. Please note, there's a limit of four employees manning each table, and opening ceremonies are, once the opening ceremonies are complete, items may be handed out. Businesses that donate $500 or more will have their names on the back of the 2021 Family Day shirt, worn by all staff and volunteers. Donations are due by September 1st to guarantee your name on the shirt. Thank you for your participation, sponsorship, and for being part of our community.
When was the deadline for that?
September 1st.
Thank you.
Okay? So that's a great thing, I think that'll be a good thing, we wanted to get it out to the public now, and let them know. We're also, if anyone in the public would like to donate towards Family Day or the concert series, you know, we'd love to have it. The more sponsorships we get, the better we can do with programs for us. Mr. Gilroy, question for you. The historical committee, what day did you say that was?
It's going to be the 20th, Wednesday.
20th, Wednesday at 7:00 p.m.
I'm just checking real quick, because I made an appointment with, the 20th is a Thursday? The reason I ask is I asked Harry about Wednesday, the 19th, for rec for a Family Day meeting.
Okay.
Are you using that night?
Well, we'll talk about that, we'll, what's the name of that, we'll reconvene about that.
Okay. I will work with you on that one. We will be holding a Family Day meeting, for anyone who's interested, on May 19th, here at Borough Hall at 7:00, to work on Family Day. We'd love to have as many people as possible involved with Family Day, it's a great, great, great event to have. And I think that was it, was that everything?
Which, you didn't mention which bands are playing, did you?
Well, right now, the only one we have definite is LSD.
Nothing says family like LSD.
That's right, nothing says family like LSD. But they are, they are the ones for June 19th. We're looking, we're going to try and see if I can get ahold of a couple local bands, we'd love to have, if anyone knows of any local Brookhaven bands, please let us know. We'd love to have those people there first, before we bring outside groups in. So we have a couple in mind that we're looking at, it's just a matter of getting ahold of them.
What sort of genres are you looking for?
Anything anybody wants to do, is what we're looking at. We're trying to make it a fun night, fun nights for everybody and different things.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's everything from rec board.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else for public discussion? All right, thank you, everyone. Good evening, it was great seeing you back in person. Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Madam Mary.
Well, you said public discussion, so I didn't know if you were coming back to council. I just wanted to thank, that I just remembered, Bateman Allen Funeral Home, for cleaning up between the Giant and Chick-fil-A, two huge bags of trash that they did on their own time to make the borough look nice, so thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Remember, if you die, to give Charles Allen some of your business. I'm sure I will. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Evening off, great to see you, but, do you need, you have something to? All right, go ahead.
This is actually the vice president, I have a quick thing for you. So at the rec board meeting, I just remembered, they had mentioned about at Sanson Park, the gate not working again, so I'm not...
It's not working again?
Yeah, they said that it was malfunctioning.
Sanson?
Yeah, if we can have Public Works just check it.
Yeah, I'll let Dave know.
Yeah, I'm not sure if someone's messing with it, but it's the batting cage one.